Good evening, welcome and thank you for joining us for tonight's regular meeting of the Arinda City Council. This is our Tuesday, May 20th, 2025, 7:00 PM regular meeting. Before we dive in, I want to remind those in attendance that need assisted living devices, they are on the table at the back of the room. And for those who are in attendance for the GAD meeting, please note that we will take a recess from the City Council meeting after the consent calendar to begin the GAD meeting and then return to the remainder of the City Council agenda. Our City Clerk will now call the walk call.
Okay, Councilmember Jean, here. Councilmember Hoxey, here. Mayor Mulcahy, here. And note for the record that Councilmembers Riley and Vice Mayor Iverson have an excuse absence this evening.
Okay, thank you, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is Item C to adopt our agenda. Are there any changes to the proposed agenda?
Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, I have no proposed changes to the agenda.
Okay. In that case, do I have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. So Item D on our agenda is Items for the Good of the City, and we are really lucky tonight in that we have some tremendous, tremendous items, recognitions and proclamations. So we're going to start right in. Item D1 is a recognition to Anne Pargony for her service on the Planning Commission, and so I'd like to ask you to come join us at the podium if you would. And before I present Anne with this certificate of recognition, you could just join us right up here. I just wanted to see if there was any public comment on this item or anyone who'd like to say anything. Okay, well, I know that Vice Mayor Iverson, who's our liaison to the Planning Commission, would have really liked to be here today and just wanted to express on behalf of all of us the incredible appreciation we have to you for serving five years on the Planning Commission during some challenging times. And, you know, service on the Planning Commission is one that is a pretty hefty lift for a volunteer resident, and so thank you so much for leading with skill and grace and just real intellect and understanding of some really complicated issues. And I don't know if others want to say something before?
Just thank you so much for your service to the city.
Yeah, and I echo that, Anne, thank you very, very much, and best wishes on your next chapter, and we so appreciate your contributions here in Arinda.
And I don't know if there's anything you want to share or you want to add based on your sentiments?
It's been a pleasure. You know, when there were some difficult times during COVID, we had these meetings virtually from our homes and trying to make it a community that still, you know, is so much more of a community when we have them here in person. We tried to do that virtually. I hope we were successful. There are a lot of things going on at the Planning Commission during that time, and glad that they're meeting in person again because it's nice to see people and see them interacting with each other. It was really been lovely to see people re-engaging with the Planning Commission. It's really just been my honor.
Well, thank you, and I will ask the, my other colleagues here to join me as I come down and we present this to you.
This certificate of recognition, I'll start speaking very loudly as presented to you. Pargony?
Pargony.
Pargony, I'm sorry. I've recognized you for five years of dedicated service on the Planning Commission, and your commitment and dedication to the community are truly appreciated. Volunteers like you are what makes me recognize the break room. Thank you so much.
Okay, that brings us to Item D2, which is to recognize Ted Urban for his service on the Arts and Public Places Committee. Come on up. Though I think we also have, I know we do have at least one speaker card here and someone else who sent in information, but before we do that, I just want to tell folks, we, this recognition recognizes Mr. Urban for 18 years of dedicated service to the Arts and Public Places Committee. And I, I know I personally have a great appreciation for all that you've done, and we've, we've been fortunate to have some conversations about your work, and I know, I know, Mr. Urban, that you're going to continue to stay involved, at least certainly desperately hope that you will, and, you know, really appreciate the thoughtful reflections you've shared about the Arts and Public Places Committee. We do have a couple of comments from others, so before we turn over the agenda to you, I do want to, I know that Richard Weston, I believe, wants to make some comments. Mr. Weston?
Where would Arinda be without Ted and Rich Urban, right? Both of whom we have honored as a city, as Citizens of the Year, and unfortunately...
Oh, sorry, sorry. And unfortunately, we can only acknowledge these two gentlemen once as Citizens of the Year, but if we could do it more often, we would. Everything you see in this city in the way of art and public places is Ted Urban and Rich, which was, is, is the reigning Citizen of the Year right now, long overdue. And I, I have known Ted since you were Chair of the Planning Commission 100 years ago. And I personally, on behalf of everybody on the Art and Public Places Commission, want to thank the City Council for honoring Ted. Every honor we can give him is fair. He has deserved it. He has worked endlessly Saturdays, installing stuff. He is smart. He is, he is very bright. He is very artistic, and he's a wonderful person to be around, and I am thrilled to be part of this ceremony tonight.
So here you go. Take a drink later. Buy a drink later.
Would anyone else like to say anything from the audience? Okay, before turning over to you, though, there's someone else that's sent in their comments, and I don't usually read public comments of appreciation like this, but I, I am today because, as Mr. Weston pointed out, words cannot express appreciation enough, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna borrow someone else's words. This is from Shelley Hudner, the Arts and Public Places Vice Chair, who wrote in to us, "I just learned that the City Council will be honoring Ted Urban's service on the Arts and Public Places Committee at its meeting tomorrow. Regrettably, I'm out of town and unable to appear. I would be grateful if you'd share these comments with Ted at that time. For many years, the Arts and Public Places Committee and more broadly the city of Arinda have benefited immeasurably from Ted Urban's tireless efforts. Ted's impeccable taste and artistic sensibilities have guided our committee's selection of sculpture and other art installations to brighten and beautify the city. His personal rapport with numerous artists throughout California and beyond has enabled our committee to acquire exquisite pieces of art for loan and purchase. Ted has always been generous in sharing his experience and in mentoring those of us who have followed him in committee service. In every recommendation, he has put the city and its needs and interests first, and Ted has made it all fun. I am deeply grateful to have served on the APPC and which such an exemplary civic leader, and I wish Ted the best in all future endeavors. With appreciation, Shelley Hudner, APPC Vice Chair."
And thank you, Shelley.
And what you have contributed to this city, sir, in terms of ours, and I know your service goes back even before the Arts and Public Places Committee, back to our original incorporation. I know you were involved in helping with that 40 years ago, and hope you can join us in July for those celebrations. And, you know, serving on our Planning Commission for, was it eight years? Or longer?
DRB eight, the Planning Commission eight, yeah.
Okay, so, and then just to, you know, eight...
I had to take a break.
So, so we're really appreciative, and I know Councilmember Jean or Councilmember Hoxey, if you want to...
Ted, I just want to say thank you. You have just been a transformative force in Arinda. I've said it many times from up here that the art in public places is just one of the things that makes me smile every single day in Arinda. I, I always am looking at the pieces. I'm always so proud of being in a city that, you know, cherishes having such lovely pieces of art and thoughtful and creative things in our community. So thank you so much. I, I agree with everything that's been said. We could never thank you enough for all that you've put into it.
Thank you.
And let's, no, just thank you so much for your service to Arinda. Having lived here for a very long time, you have beautified our city and made it measurably better than it used to be, so thank you for all that you've done.
Thank you.
And with that, sir, the floor is finally yours.
I don't have a lot that I have to say. I think we're volunteers and we do all the things we hope to do for the city. We seek out things where we can have a meaningful contribution based on what we love to do or what we think we can do, and that's the reward that you get back for your volunteer work. If I didn't, every time I go out to install art or look at choosing a piece of art, it is a personal pleasure that I go through that I'm given the privilege by the city to allow myself to do that. So I think whether you're on the Planning Commission or so many other volunteer organizations, if you don't find a niche where you feel you can make a real contribution and then add value to the time and effort you put in, then that's unfortunate, but in Arinda, we have hundreds of volunteers that have stood up for generations to do this, and it's just a wonderful community to be involved in, so appreciate it.
Well, tremendous thanks to you, and I'm going to ask my colleagues to join me so we can present you with the certificate.
For the House, this certificate of recognition presents Ted Urban in recognition of your 18 years of keeping a commitment on the Arts and Public Places Committee. You were instrumental in the community's formation and will listen members, your time and dedication to the city's art and public physical program, and throughout queer community, and enjoying the value.
Okay. And next on our agenda is Item D3, which is declaring the month of June 2025 as LGBTQIA+ Month in the city of Arinda. And I think we do have some public comments on this, and what I'm going to do first is read and present a proclamation, and I'd like to ask Ken to come up to the stand for this. And first, I'd like to read it, and then I'll come up and present it to you and, and give you an opportunity to make public comments as well as anyone else who'd like to speak. So this is something that we have done before. June, as many know, is Pride Month, and so this is a proclamation declaring the month of June 2025 as LGBTQIA+ Pride Month in the city of Arinda. Whereas, June has become a symbolic month in which lesbian women, gay men, bisexual people, transgender, queer questioning, intersex, and asexual people and supporters come together in various celebrations of pride. And whereas, the city of Arinda has a diverse LGBTQIA+ community and is committed to supporting visibility, dignity, and equity for all people in the community, and whereas, many of the current and past residents, students, city employees, and business owners within the city of Arinda who contribute to the enrichment of our city are part of the LGBTQIA+ community. And whereas, it is important for communities like the city of Arinda to both show support of our residents and stand in opposition to intolerant treatment and discrimination. And whereas states, municipalities, businesses, educational, and religious institutions across the state recognize and celebrate June as Pride Month. And whereas, the rainbow flag, also known as the pride flag or gay pride flag, has been used since the 1970s as a symbol of pride social movements. Flying the rainbow flag throughout the month of June further symbolizes a celebration of diversity and support for the LGBTQIA+ community. Now, therefore be it resolved that I, Lethika Mulcahy, Mayor, do hereby declare the month of June as LGBTQIA+ Pride Month in the city of Arinda, and invite everyone to reflect on ways we can all live and work together with a commitment to mutual respect and understanding. With that, I'm going to come up and ask my colleagues to join me in presenting you with the proclamation, and, and do you want to introduce yourself?
Ken, I can, right now.
And then I'll, I'll ask you to hold up on the comments until after.
Okay.
I would like to present this to you, and hey, who is from PFLAG La Arinda, and I forgot their actual title, and the trigger, oh, so, thank you so much. Please in.
And Hen, thank you for being here, and I wanted to give you an opportunity to make some comments.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. I did write something, so again, I'm Hen King, and good evening, everybody, and again, good evening. Is that, okay, there we go, it goes up, okay. I am, so who I am is, I'm a proud transgender person, a parent, and a small business owner. We are the place that is kind, warm, makes us feel safe. For me, that includes the city of Arinda and serving on the board of PFLAG La Arinda, an organization that exists for this community, supporting, educating, and advocating for LGBTQIA+ individuals, their families, and their friends. You may ask, why is this even an issue? Or why do we need to recognize LGBTQIA+ folks? So I'll tell you why. Being an LGBTQIA+ person means being in the low double to single digit percentile range of the population. If you're trans, you may be in the one half of 1% range. We are a marginalized group, trying to fit in, trying to exist, work, live, and play. All wrong managing, and as a trans person, speaking personally, what often feels like a radio in your head playing at full volume, telling you you don't belong. It, it's a life that comes with its own quiet weight, sometimes a life of depression, anxiety, and isolation, but in communities like this one, where love and inclusion are promoted, not discarded, it doesn't have to be that way. Lately, inclusion has been shunned. There's this idea that trans people are trying to gain the system in women's sports, for example, and I will state clearly, I've been a runner my whole life, including participating in my own high school track team at Campolindo, granted decades ago. And since I've started hormone therapy, the strength I had was to run, to lift... And since I have started hormone therapy, the strength I had once to run, to lift, to compete is night and day. There's nothing competitive about trans folk in sports, except the will to keep showing up and to belong, just as everyone here should be allowed to do. As a business owner, a parent, a family use soccer coach, and an LGBTQIA+ volunteer, I have always strived to create spaces where dignity and respect are foundational, but not just to only include LGBTQIA+ individuals, but everyone. And now, I hear that who I am is somehow wrong, that I don't belong here. That hurts a lot because in America, every one of us needs to count. In America, inclusion matters, not just morally, but practically. Because in America, giving people the freedom to discover who they are, who they want to be, or not who they want to be, is part of that promise. Because in America, that's what makes this country soar. Including allowing folks like me to help build the very infrastructure we all rely on every day in the logistics industry. So, thank you, city of Arinda. Thank you, esteemed council members, Madam Mayor. Thank you to all who make room at the table for everyone. Thank you for recognizing that pride isn't about being loud. It's about offering a warm welcome to all. And thank you for reminding every LGBTQIA+ person in Arinda and beyond, you count, you belong, and you are needed. Happy Pride, city of Arinda.
Thank you so very much, Ken. Thank you for joining us. Thank you for sharing with us. And thank you for reminding us that you belong here, I belong here, and we all belong here. Thank you. I want to thank PFLAG La Marinda as well for their work in our community. It's not easy work, especially times like this. But it's also critically important work. And so, I believe strongly that communities thrive when we are loving, caring, compassionate, accepting, and inclusive. And thank you for creating, helping us create inclusive communities in La Marinda. I wanted to give my council members an opportunity to say something, and then we'll move into public comment.
Thank you so much. That was absolutely beautiful and in today's world, so needed. And I just want to thank everyone in Arinda. I would say that the number of emails and comments we got about Pride Month equals anything, any topic I have ever seen here in Arinda. And it was just heartwarming to me that by far and away, the vast, vast majority of them were in support. And it just made me feel exceptionally proud to represent Arinda, to be part of Arinda, and to know that no matter what you see in today's world, that there are still enormous amounts of people that care and are accepting and do believe that inclusion is very important. So, thank you to our whole community and thank you so much to all of you for being here tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember G. Thank you so much for your words. They're very inspiring. When we were saying the Pledge of Allegiance, the phrase "justice for all" jumped out at me. And when I was on the school board and we, with the city, adopted the slogan "Everyone Belongs Here", it's really true and it needs to be true in Arinda for everybody. And so, we really appreciate your being here today to share your perspective with us. And if our proclamation can make one person feel more comfortable in Arinda, I'm so happy that we adopted it today. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I know we have some public comments, so I wanted to first, I have a speaker card from, is it Scott Honeychurch?
Thank you very much, council members.
Oh, I'm sorry. So, this was your, I just want your, your agenda item. You're welcome to speak on this topic. This is the proclamation. Your agenda item that you asked to speak on that was H1, which is later on our agenda.
Yes, the flag, but I think it's interwoven here through Yomai.
Okay, absolutely. I just wanted to.
Thank you very much. You know, all the mayor and council members, you know, I met many of you. I'm honored to serve on the HOA committee for my local neighborhood in Arinda. And I kept saying with enough just strong support, how proud I am of a city council that shares the same values that I have, my neighbors have. Councilmember Hoxie, you mentioned the "everyone belongs here" motto. Our neighbors have signs up that say that. I see them every day, multicolor. You know, they have everything but the pride flag on them, but they really, they amounted the same thing. You know, when I moved to Arinda in 2018, you know, I really, I was looking for a safe community like we all are, safe neighborhood, good schools, vibrant downtown, engaged community. I think we're fortunate to have, you know, a very well-educated, you know, a base of citizens here. And, you know, I hope that translates into what I call, you know, equality, inclusion, kindness, values that I have that you all seem to share. And I, again, can't be more proud to see you do this in what otherwise would be kind of a sleepy, bended community. And I've read comments online talking about how this is controversial. I mean, how could this be controversial, right? This is love and kindness and equality and acceptance, right? Everybody, you know, wants to have our neighbors, our children, share these same values. And with that, thank you for your consideration and thank you for what you've done.
Thank you very much for your comment. Would anyone else like to give public comment on this item? Okay, with that, I just want to say, sort of echo, Councilmember G's noting the tremendous, incredible amount of public comment we got on this item and how there was so much positivity and love and just expressions of engagement in our community of being a tolerant, inclusive place that communicates to children that everyone belongs here. So, thank you all so much for those of you who took the time to write in and engage with us. That takes us to another, our item D four, which is to declare May 18 through 24, 2024. May is Public Works Appreciation Week in the city of Arinda. And I know I see our Public Works Director here, so I will ask him to come join us. I don't know if I see other Public Works employees here. But I have a proclamation here to present. And, you know, a lot of you may not think much about Public Works, but it is very important. It's sort of the backbone, the bread and butter of what we do in Arinda is, you know, roads, drains, and a lot of other infrastructure. And this last year has been a particularly challenging year for our Public Works Department in that not only have we taken on some incredible structural needs and addressing them and really going through our roads plan or drains plan, but also, you know, really, and I won't, I'll let you speak to this later because I know you probably want to say something about it, but tackling on the issue of how to address privately maintained roads and drains. And that's been a lot of extra work. So, I'm just going to read from this proclamation and not say anymore. But the appreciation this year is very well-deserved because it's been a very hefty lift for this department. So, recognizing May 18 through 24, 2025, is National Public Works Week. Keep a purpose presence is the theme. Whereas, Public Works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the city of Arinda. And whereas, these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of Public Works professionals, who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas, it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in Arinda to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of Public Works and Public Works programs in their communities. And whereas, the year 2025 marks the 65th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association and the Canadian Public Works Association. Now, therefore be it resolved that I, Lethika Malakani, Mayor of Arinda, do hereby recognize the week of May 18 through 24, 2025, as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the association and government agencies and activities, events, and ceremonies paying tribute to our Public Works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the very substantial contributions, especially in Arinda, they make to protecting our health, safety, and quality of life. So, thank you to our Public Works Director and our Public Works staff.
Hours and hours and hours. Share that with our city in there as well.
Yes. Yes, thank you very much. We appreciate your support and certainly the support of the other departments and our fuel crews, our engineers, the various administrative staff. So, it all goes into play and it's a great experience for us. So, thank you.
You laugh, Scott, but believe it or not, no matter what the mayor thinks, I think about Public Works every day. And I just want to thank all of you and the whole team. And you do a fabulous job. And Ted has certainly been transformative here in Arinda. But believe me, I think the resurrection of our Public Works and transforming our road system has been pretty transformative as well. And I think a lot of people in Arinda do appreciate very much everything that you guys have done. And as the mayor mentioned, you guys take on a lot and it is deeply appreciated. So, thank you very much.
Okay. So, next, I just say something. Yes, I'm sorry. That's okay. Thank you, Scott. You've been a great help to me as I was joining the city council. I'm very appreciative of the work you do. And I've really come to appreciate how important the Public Works Department is to the offerings of what a city offers its citizens and what a great job you do for everyone. So, thank you.
Okay. Is there any other public comment on this item? Seeing none, we will move on to item D five, which is the Arinda Teen Advisory Council Annual Report. And I think that our Parks and Rec, Director Trimble is going to take over now.
Very, very quickly, thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. For the record, Todd Trimble, Parks and Recreation Director, I'm just going to quickly hand this off, this presentation that's become kind of an annual thing. To, it's certainly not enough time to go through all the exciting, busy time that this council had this year. But I'm going to start quickly by handing it off to our awesome recreation supervisor, Shina Rahman, who will introduce a little further. And then Sherry will teach us how to use the fancy clicker.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Malakani and Councilmember G and Hoxie. I'm Shina Rahman. I'm our recreation supervisor here in our department. And before we get to the item, I'd like to take a brief moment to introduce our newest addition to our team, Spencer Beatty. He's our new recreation coordinator who replaced Matt Del Martini. And he's here to introduce our Arinda Teen Advisory Council.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, council. Thank you for having us. My name is Spencer Beatty. I am the Recreation Coordinator, involved in supervising the Arinda Teen Advisory Council, otherwise known as OTAC. And we have a few members here tonight. We have Tiam, Tiam Tadavani and Andrew Bay. And we also have George Ballen, who is our chairperson and will be presenting to you tonight. I'll give the floor to him.
Thank you and welcome.
Very soon, well, good evening, everyone. My name is George Ballen. I'm honored to serve as this year's OTAC Chair. And for today, we have, awesome, a brief presentation about the work that we've accomplished throughout the past year and what we're looking forward to next year. These are our incredible officers that our council has the honor of electing every year. So, of course, I'm honored to serve as this year's chairperson. And then, one of the things we were proud of doing this year was expanding the amount of officer roles that we had so that even more people had the opportunity to serve in these capacities. A highlight for membership was that this year, we really saw also an explosive growth in membership. Last year, we had around 20 people interested. This year, we began with an incredible 40. And throughout the year, we've seen remarkably higher turnout at most of our meetings. And so, that's something that we're incredibly proud to have worked on this past year, especially with expanding our middle school base. And it's something that we're also going to look to take into next year. Some of the annual events that we're proud to put out include our Arinda Action Day, our Red Cross Blood Drive, our Winter Fest, our Kids Nights Out, which we hold at different times of the year, our Trunk and Treat. And new this year was our Expert Speaker Series, where we heard from different experts from the city on a variety of different issues that we'll detail more in the coming slides. Here's some photos from our different events. We are also really honored to have had additional turnout at most of them. We were able to reach so many new community members and so many students have the opportunity to get involved in many of these. And so, these are incredible opportunities for people of our ages to get involved. And they're stuff that we're proud to put on again and again each year. So, as I was mentioning earlier, this year, we had the opportunity to do inaugural OTAC issue-based topic areas. So, essentially, what we kind of did was that we went to our membership and we asked them, you know, what are the top three areas of interest that us as Arinda youth have? And so, some of the issues that we kind of culminated on were fire safety, park planning, and also traffic safety. And so, we hosted a series of meetings where we heard from a variety of different speakers, including James Steph, Todd Trimble, and then Siva Kumar Natarajan, who always provided us with incredible information about all these different, you know, areas of expertise that we might not have known a lot about before. So, that was something that we were really honored to be able to have the opportunity to do this year. Some of the highlights and takeaways that we were able to gather after meeting with our members, meeting in multiple groups, hearing from all of us at all of our different meetings, including for fire safety, we came together to discuss emphasizing awareness of the different safety and evacuation routes. We also wanted to discuss increasing education on the best fire practices so that, you know, of course, our parents and other older adults have knowledge on that. So, G, with Arinda, her park amenities, some of the stuff that we focused on was increasing advertising of many of the existing amenities that we have. So, including of the little dog park, as well as supporting additional accessibility of the awesome facilities that we have, including our tennis courts and pickleball courts and potentially even adding new ones so that more people have access to them. For traffic safety, some of the stuff that we focused on was increasing sidewalk access. And we also discussed improving public transit to help, you know, reduce some of that traffic going to and from our schools, as well as decreasing some of those, you know, more punitive measures and relying more on education as opposed to those other measures to ensure that our youth are prepared to drive safely and that they're able to, you know, succeed in the face of many of them entering driving. Some of the future plans that we have are, of course, continuing our collaborations. This is, again, something that we were incredibly happy to do for the first time this year, which is something that we hope to build on next year. We also look forward toward to hosting our annual OTAC events, also expanding on some of them, and then also doing different collaborations. also expanding on some of them, and then also doing different collaborations with other youth councils, for example, Moraga, and having events with them such as a pickleball tournament and other ones that increase opportunities for not just the people living in our community, but for the people, you know, in areas across our broader community. We're also, again, excited to collaborate with other local youth serving groups and different organizations to ensure that our voices are heard. So, yeah, that's pretty much everything that we've had a chance to work on this year. We're, again, honored for the partnership that we've had with the City of Arinda and our city council. So, thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Are there any questions that you have for George?
So, you said there are 40 students or teenagers on your OTAC?
Yeah, we began with 40 at the beginning of the year. And this obviously trickled down a little bit, but, you know, across the board, I think the conclusion is that every year we're kind of seeing an increase in members. And hopefully, next year, we'll be able to hit even greater heights.
That's great. It's great to see you so involved in the city activities and sharing your point of view with the city. I appreciate it a lot.
Councilmember G.
Thank you so much for being here tonight. That was great to hear about. And my question for all of you is just, what are you thinking that you'd like to have or do? Or, you know, something that maybe the city could add to what you're able to access in terms of learning or fun or...
Ooh, I think this year, you know, of course, our highlight was getting to work with Councilmember Iverson and the broader city council on really coming together on those issues and beginning to kind of take steps to find what the biggest issues were, what the biggest priorities were. And so, next year, you know, I think the thing that many of us would really be interested in is getting to take those ideas and really turn them into action. So, whether it's addressing the different conclusions that we brought up on fire safety or traffic, just kind of getting to see some of those things really flower.
And one of my questions for you was on that last point. First of all, thank you for an excellent report. Thank you so much. And for all the work that, to your whole council, your Teen Advisory Council, all the work that you've done. How can, how can the City of Arinda implement measures to help educate teens and their parents about evacuation and wildfire prevention and preparedness? Any thoughts come up in your discussion that you want to share with us about maybe stuff we could be doing that we're not yet doing?
Mm-hmm. Of course. So, one of the things that we see that schools like Miramani offer, for example, earlier this semester, was different driving classes. And so, what we kind of envision is expanding on those courses and maybe offering them for specifically fire safety. And, you know, I think what we're also really interested in is getting to maybe also open up the floor for discussions or different kind of events where, you know, even if we're having one a year, maybe expanding that to two or three so that, you know, parents and youth have the opportunity to learn more about those issues whenever they have the time to or whenever they have the availability to.
Well, I know that we're thinking about, we're trying to, planning to have a couple of community awareness nights in the fall, community education nights, similar to the one we had earlier a few weeks ago here, that would be held at schools. And the idea was we would do one in North Arinda and one in South Arinda just for convenience of our residents. But the idea is we would, we would hold them at schools in hopes of sort of attracting parent and student communities. So, maybe you all can help publicize that or something like that and work together more. And I just want to also share, I've, I've heard from Councilmember Iverson how much, or Vice Mayor Iverson, rather, how much she really enjoys, has enjoyed working, working with you all and getting to know you. So, I know she can't be here tonight. But was, I think, I'm sure she regrets, I mean, wishes she could be, right? She could. So, I wanted to express that. Anything else?
Again, we're very thankful for your continued service. And, yeah, thank you again.
Well, likewise, we're all volunteers and you are too, and we all do this together. So, thank you all. Okay, and is there any public or, any more public or council comments on this item? If not, that takes us to public forum. Item, Agenda Item E. The public forum is an opportunity for members of the public to address the council members on items that are not on tonight's agenda. Additionally, a speaker has the option of addressing the council on an item listed on the agenda if a speaker will not be present when the item is taken up. And I did want to remind folks that after Consent Calendar, before we get into Policy Matters, which is, includes Item H1, where there is some public, some folks, I think, that have requested public comment on that, which is a Pride Month flag raising. So, we're going to have the GAD meeting in between Consent Calendar and Policy Matters. So, if anybody wants to speak to that now rather than wait, you're welcome to do so on any item. Is there anyone who would like to speak and address the council tonight during public forum? Okay. Seeing none, I will close public forum. And that takes us to Item F, which is our Consent Calendar. The Consent Calendar section of the agenda consists of items that are acted on in one motion unless a council member or a member of the public requests that the council remove an item from the Consent Calendar for discussion. Do we have any items that we've requested we move on? No? Okay. Then do I have a motion and a second to adopt the Consent Calendar as proposed? So moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So, that passes unanimously. We will now start the Arinda GAD meeting and table the rest of the city council agenda items until after the GAD meeting concludes. So, with that, good evening, welcome. And thank you for joining us for tonight's meeting of the Arinda Geological Hazard Abatement District Board Meeting, or GAD meeting. Can we have a call to order? Or do we need a walk call?
Here.
Here. Thank you. Item B is adoption of the agenda. Are there any changes to the proposed agenda? Seeing none. Do I have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda?
Unmove. Approval.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item C is public forum of the GAD meeting. The public forum is, again, an opportunity for members of the public to address the board on items that are not on tonight's agenda. Additionally, a speaker has the option of addressing the board on an item listed on the agenda if a speaker will not be present when that item is taken up. Is there anyone here this evening who would like to address the board? Seeing none, and I have seen those speaker cards, I will close public forum. Item D is our Consent Calendar. The Consent Calendar section of the agenda consists of items that are acted on in one motion unless a board member or a member of the public requests that the board remove an item from the Consent Calendar for discussion. Do I have a motion and a second to adopt the Consent Calendar as proposed? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. That brings us to our Policy Matters. And our first policy matter is the fiscal year 2025-26 budget for the GAD and related matters. And I will ask now for the staff report.
Good evening, Chair and Board Members. Great to see you all again. And I see we still have a few people present. So, I'll just give a brief introduction of myself. I am Haley Ralston. I am a geologist at NGO. And NGO serves as the GAD manager for the Arinda GAD. And the Arinda GAD, GAD stands for Geological Hazard Abatement District and is a separate entity from the city serving to protect communities from geologic hazards. Currently, the Arinda GAD includes the Wilder Development, Arinda Oaks Development, and the Sunnyside Lane Development. So, with that, I'll continue on. Maybe? Thank you. Great. So, the action being considered this evening before the board is adopt Arinda GAD Resolution 2025, approving the fiscal year 25-26 budget for the Arinda GAD, setting assessment levies at 90% of the assessment limit for fiscal year 25-26 for the Arinda Oaks and Wilder Developments, and updating the annual Consumer Price Index Reference month to December. So, just to remind everybody how the GAD is funded. The GAD is funded through supplemental property tax assessments placed on the property tax bills for the residents within the GAD, as mentioned, just the Wilder and Arinda Oaks communities at this moment. So, we anticipate that all of the residential lots within both developments will be assessed this coming fiscal year, which has been, been as such for the last few fiscal years. And that revenue is divided into maintenance and operations as well as long-term reserve accumulation. So, as provided in the budget in staff report here is that the assessment limit for 25-26 will be $3,695.03 for the Arinda Oaks Development and $3,974.62 for the Wilder Development. Since fiscal year 22-23, the board has opted to levy an amount 10% less than the limit. And the reason for that has just been the accumulation of GAD reserves with the levies had been ahead of pace than originally anticipated for the engineers' reports for these communities. So, with the 10% reduction, the levy will be $3,325.53 for the Arinda Oaks Development and $3,577.16 for the Wilder Development. The budget prepared anticipates the revenue with the reduction in the levies. And then additionally, as mentioned in the resolution title, is that staff propose updating the annual Consumer Price Index month to December. Reason being for this is, as I just mentioned here, is that we can provide more exact numbers for the assessment limits and levies of a year instead of waiting until the June CPI is released. So, we did discuss with the GAD Treasurer on this a recommendation as well, and he was in favor of it. So, it was discussing with staff. So... Okay. So, our slide here just breaks down the summary of the budget. The proposed expenses for 25-26 fiscal year is the expenses are proposed to be $720,785, broken down the following, with GAD manager approximately $94,000. Other GAD staff and administration items totaling about $35,000, $35,000, excuse me. And then, and then preventive maintenance operation being the largest item, the, you know, $590,000. Just to note that for item for the GAD manager item of $94,000, there is, the majority of this is reserved for working with staff and developer on finalizing transfer items for the Wilder Development to the GAD. And then, as shown, we have no planned major repair items this coming fiscal year as the site is performing well, and we don't have any significant repairs planned. Okay, so, for 25-26 fiscal year, we anticipate a revenue of little over a million dollars. And that is from the assessments for both of the developments in addition to reserve interest revenue. And then, based on the proposed expenditures, we estimate about $360,000 going into reserves by the end of the fiscal year. So, here we provide those numbers here in current dollars, what the account balance, you know, is proposed to be at the start of this coming fiscal year. And with the revenue and expenditures, we estimate our fund balance at the end of 25-26 fiscal year to be 4.8 million. So, this graph helps visualize our reserve, current reserve balance against the target reserve that was planned for the GAD, for the communities in the GAD. And we put this graph or the values that I just presented previously into constant dollars so that we are comparing apples to apples, per se. So, here we show that the blue line has been what the actual account balance has been throughout the GAD. And the red is the forecast balance. And then the green is the target. And so, the green line there, as we see, has a couple ticks up, and those indicate annexations. So, initially, the GAD was formed with the Wilder Development, and then Arinda Oaks came in soon thereafter. And then, a few years ago, we included the Sunnyside Development. So, we increased, you know, the total, total reserve based on their reserve portion. And so, now that line is the new reserve target for all of the communities. So, then furthermore, as shown in the forecast line, which is the red line, the dips show or are shown to anticipate large-scale events that may occur that the GAD would have to respond to. And those were originally planned for in the engineers' reports. So, we just like to show those as well. And obviously, it's kind of seen before in our previous, in our current account balances. If we don't have any major repairs and we don't need to dip into reserves for that, we are able to continue trending upward towards the reserve target. So, it's important to note that the GAD currently has adequate reserves to respond to significant large-scale events, but it has, you know, not reached its total target yet. So, a recommendation to the board is to adopt approved Resolution 02-25, approving the fiscal year 2025-26 budget for the Arinda GAD, setting the assessment levies at 90% of the assessment limit for fiscal year 25-26 for the Arinda Oaks and Wilder Developments, and updating the annual Consumer Price Index Reference month to December. And GAD staff are available for any questions the board may have.
Thank you. Do board members have questions about... Councilmember G.
Thank you so much, Haley. I, I have a question that I, I hope is okay to ask because it's not, I have no issue with anything you presented. But I'm curious as to what you're... Do you have a projection for how much longer it's going to be before everything that you're anticipating to be put into the GAD is transferred over?
Yes, thank you for the question, Board Member G. It's a great question. As the board may know and others know, we have accepted some responsibilities to date. And for most part, majority, except we, the GAD does not own some certain open space parcels that were still originally planned. And the developers are still working with the resource agencies to finalize those requirements, et cetera, before the GAD can, can accept ownership of those. So, I like to say, you know, within maybe the next year or two possibly. But I think it's, it's been the resource agencies review processes that have taken some more time than anticipated.
Councilmember Hoxey.
Thank you. I saw that there are $0 allocated for major events. So, I'm just trying to understand what kind of major events, major repairs you might allocate money for? Or what would be on that line item?
Yes, definitely. Great. Thank you for the question. Is that major repair, we anticipate of a large-scale geologic hazard or formal repair needing to be planned for of, at about $250,000 or more. So, in the budget, we do have a line item for minor mineralization or geologic hazard response. response that the GAD or contractor can go out and perform quickly and responsibly, but it would depend on the magnitude of such, say landslide, for example, or such that, you know, we would we would review as engineers and geologists and determine what the repair needs to be, and if it needs to be a more detailed and designed fix or such. And so that's where such major repair would be planned for. We would we would recognize that, you know, a geologic hazard occurred during a fiscal year, and we want to plan for a specific budget from reserves possibly to to fund that. So that's where we would see what typical projects would be for major repairs, like large-scale landslides or earth movement in that in that way.
And since the GAD was formed, have we had any of those events?
Not not considered major repair. The GAD has responded to more minor, you know, geologic hazard or land movement-related items, but we do actually plan to also address a couple items this summer, minor kind of landslide repairs and open space, but nothing of large-scale major repair.
And does the GAD also do preventative work to identify potential problems?
Yes, most definitely. So as the GAD manager, we are monitoring the site twice a year, looking for those early signs of items that we need to address before they become bigger. And in addition, the GAD has contracted with a maintenance contractor to clean out ditches, detention basins, et cetera, to make sure all of that is ready for winners.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And that's related to my my question, which was if you could sort of highlight some of the major items that will be covered by the preventative maintenance and operations line item on the budget, the 591, because I'm just, there may be some of our some of our residents who contribute, live in communities that contribute to the GAD maybe watching, and I'm sure you'd like to hear that.
Yes, oh, definitely. Thank you. The majority of this budget item or cost is related to the maintenance contractor and work needed to perform, you know, between both the communities, Wilder and Arinda Oaks. I'll say, you know, a couple of the largest ticket items are weed abatement. So earlier this year, the GAD did accept responsibilities for weed abatement surrounding the communities within Wilder. It's only private properties within Arinda Oaks, so the GAD does not perform any weed abatement there. But over in Wilder, the GAD has accepted those responsibilities, so that is the significant additional or part of the maintenance operation budget budget there, excuse me. And then as well as just, yeah, routine ditch cleaning, detention basin cleaning out as well, in addition to our monitoring services, also heavy rainfall monitoring, we will check out the sites during those events. And then also, as I mentioned, we do allocate a little bit for minor slope erosion response as needed throughout the throughout the fiscal year.
Thank you. Any other board member questions? Any public comment on item, or sorry, was there anything else, Ms. Ralston, in terms of the staff report?
That completes my staff report.
Then item E1 of the GAD meeting, is there any public comment on that item? Yes.
It's really just a question. What do you do? I heard landslide.
So I'm going to ask you to just come.
My name is Clay Callen, and I just remembered, I heard that whole report. So landslides, earthquakes, what is it that you actually do? What is a geological hazard, and why only in those areas?
Okay, so let me finish with public comment, and then we'll move to discussion, and maybe we can. Is there any other public comment on item E1 of our GAD meeting? Hearing none, I will close public comment and bring it back to the council for discussion. And what is being discussed, what is being asked of us is to adopt the GAD resolution. But before then, Ms. Ralston, is there anything else? I wanted to give you an opportunity to.
Would you like me to address the public? Yes, most definitely, I'd be happy to. So GAD law is what GAD is governed by, it is California state law, and specifically in the law, it states that a geologic hazard is any natural or unnatural movement of soil or earth movement. So for the Arinda development and Arinda, sorry, Wilder development and Arinda Oaks development, you know, the GAD would respond to any anything of that nature. So yes, it could be landslides from heavy rainfall, it could also be any earth movement from significant earthquake shaking, maybe flooding, which I know is not likely would happen in Wilder, but anything related to land or earth movement is what is defined as a geologic hazard under GAD law and what the GAD is is there for. In in answer to specifically just for these communities that are within the GAD, originally, these communities at the time of development were conditioned by the city to be to their form or be included in the GAD for the reasons of long-term geologic hazard hazard response. So that's how the GADs were formed for these communities.
Thank you. Council, I'm sorry, board member discussion, excuse me.
Just to clarify, it was part of the Wilder approval to develop to be part of the GAD? I'm less clear on how the Oaks Park area became part of the GAD?
I mean, there is a whole background on that. I do want to make sure that our discussion is sort of confined to, you know, accepting, it's to adopt the resolution approving the budget. So that's what we're talking about now. I don't have an immediate recollection of that whole history, and I think it might be outside the scope of.
No, that's fine. I just I just think it's important for the public to understand that there are specific reasons why these communities have a GAD and are included in this, and why others in the city of Arinda may not be.
And maybe it, I know that that, some of that has been addressed at prior GAD meetings, so perhaps prior minutes would shed light on that as well.
I could just add slightly to that is that, yes, as the GAD may have been formed initially before completion of development for these, there could be GADs that are formed for existing communities. That is definitely allowed under GAD law, and we've seen it happen, you know, and it tends to be a benefit for those for those homeowners. There's obviously a lot of details to go into that, but GADs could be formed across existing communities with geologic hazards as well.
So, so any discussion on approving the budget? Okay, then do we have a motion to adopt GAD Resolution Number 225, approving the fiscal year 2526 budget for the Arinda GAD, setting assessment levies at 90% of the limit for fiscal year 2025 within the Arinda Oaks and Wilder developments, and updating the CPI reference month annually to December? So moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So that passes unanimously. That takes us to item E2 of the GAD meeting, which is an amendment to the service contract with NGO with the Arinda GAD.
And Treasury, GAD Treasurer Doug Alessio will present this item.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman, and members of the board. I'm Doug Alessio, I'm the Treasurer for the Arinda Geologic Hazard Baning District. The item before you tonight is a proposed amendment to the service agreement with NGO for GAD management services. So on August 19th of 2008, the GAD Board of Directors appointed NGO as the GAD manager and directed staff to execute the services agreement on behalf of the GAD with NGO. The services agreement was originally signed on January 1st, 2012, and Section 4.4A provides for an annual pay limit increase for the services. So the NGO is requesting a pay increase for this year. Excuse me. The pay increase is about 2.5% for administrative items. There are other items that appear to be a larger increase, but those are items that are tied to activity levels, right? So if you look at the table, you'll see that transfer services is sort of a new item, and it didn't, wasn't budgeted by the year, has to do with trying to get those parcels completely transferred, but items that are tied to maintenance or preventive maintenance, depending on the level of service, the fee turns out to be 20% of of the budget. So all the activity that's contemplated occurs, the compensation to NGO would be Frequently, the activity that was not achieved, and so the pay could be less than that frequently is. So the item before you is to adopt the resolution approving the increased NGO's contract. So if you have any questions, I'm available.
Thank you. Any questions for our GAD Treasurer, Mr. Alissia?
I have one. What is this increase compared to past years? Is it similar?
This has been constant for the time that I've been here. It's about 2.5% each year.
Great, thank you. With the transfer funds being additional, because we're trying to move this along.
Yes, and that's not something that was as intensive before.
Right.
Other questions? Okay, I, it was all very clear, and there was a lot of detail provided in the report, including in the prior item as well, so I don't have any other questions. If there's nothing else from the staff report, then I will call for public comment on item E2. Would any members of the public like to speak on this item? I have no speaker cards and seen no one wanting to make public comment, I would close public comment and bring it back for board discussion. And our, the recommendation is that we adopt GAD Resolution 325, approving an amendment to the service contract with NGO. Any comments on that? No? It's seems reasonable, and we certainly want to get these items lots transferred.
Yeah, I'm happy to move approval for Resolution Number 0325, providing the amendment to the contract for NGO services.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes unanimously. There, item F is discussion and direction. There are no agenda items in this section tonight. Item G is GAD Board Member Reports, or rather, does anyone have a report they'd like to share? I have none either. And item H is GAD Manager Report, and the GAD staff will provide a report. Thank you.
Just a brief brief update since we last met, is that we have performed our annual or spring monitoring event for both the communities, and then we are working on our spring maintenance items, which are focused around weed abatement, specifically around the development buffer and the detention bases within the Wilder development. So those are underway or almost completed, and I think the next time we may see is for any any transfer or related items to to Wilder.
Any questions? I just have one, which is how how do we communicate with our, and I'm sure you've told us this, but if you could remind me, how do we communicate? How does the GAD communicate with residents in the impact communities within the GAD that this weed abatement is happening? Because we occasionally do get asked, right, about what, you know, what's happening?
Yes, this is the first year that the GAD will be performing the weed abatement around the communities, and so I can follow up with the HOA, informing them that, you know, we we have done that. I think they may know someone has done it a little bit sooner than has done, has been performed in prior years, so. But I know we have a good relationship with the HOA manager for the Wilder developments, so they are constantly reaching out to us and are responding to them on just any questions that the Wilder community has.
Yeah, I'm sure that it would be beneficial for residents to know about that.
Yep.
Anything else? Item I is matters initiated. Are there any matters initiated? No. And item seeing none. Item J is adjournment. Do I have a motion and a second to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
The GAD meeting is adjourned, and we will now restart the city council meeting. We have our continued public hearing, and our public hearing matter tonight is item G1, which is a public hearing continuation on the master fee schedule, and I will ask staff for the introduction and presentation.
Mayor and councilmembers, thank you. This is a continuation request staff has made. We are, in reviewing the master fee schedule, there was a noticing requirement to get the notice out, but when we reviewed the master fee schedule, we realized there was additional changes we needed to make to this fee schedule, so it is not prepared for you tonight. We are recommending that the council continue the hearing to a date certain on June 17th so that we don't have to renotice the meeting, and we will certainly consider any public testimony if there's any members of the public here tonight. We could have an opening of that public hearing. I doubt we have any members of the public here tonight, though.
Okay, well, should I first take council member questions and then call public comment?
Sure.
Okay, so do any council members have questions about item G1? Okay, seeing none, I'll open public comment from item G1. Is there, are there any members of the?
It's a public hearing, so. I'm sorry, I guess maybe we just identify whether or not there is any members of the public here for the public hearing tonight. If there isn't, then we won't even open the hearing.
Got it. So are there any members of the public that are here for the public hearing on the master fee schedule? I see no one here, so then we.
We don't need to open the public hearing.
Do we need any council action to continue the matter?
Yes, please have a motion to continue this hearing to a date certain, June 17, 2025.
Would anyone like to bring that motion?
Sure.
I move that we continue this hearing to June 17, 2025.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So that passes. So that takes us to item H1, which is our pride month flag raising. This is our policy matters section of the agenda, and I will ask staff for the presentation and introduction.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Members of City Council. At your previous meeting, the council was asked to place an item on the upcoming agenda so you could discuss the request of raising the rainbow flag during the month of June. Last month, I adopted administrative regulation around the ID, around the outdoor flag display. The regulation covers the matters of when the, how flags should be flown for both federal and state statutes, using, looking at our federal and state statutes as well as procedures for the display of commemorative flags. The regulation states that any commemorative flag may be authorized by the city council as an expression of the city's official sentiments. So this is really just in front of you this evening as a result of your discussion at the last meeting. If the council decides to raise the rainbow flag annually, staff may recommended that it would be put in place unless the council changes its position in the future, but at the same token, if the council is interested in potentially taking this issue up annually, we could certainly consider that as well. So I just wanted to make sure you had the optionality there. And if the council does decide to raise the rainbow flag, the city will raise the flag on the first day of June and for each June thereafter, depending on decision for the, from the city council as to whether or not to continue it on an ongoing basis. And you also may wish to hold a ceremonial event in conjunction with that flag raising. We'd be happy to assist. So I will turn it back over to the city council and happy to answer any questions.
Okay, do we have any questions of our city manager? No? Okay. I didn't have any questions either. Do we have any public comment on item H1? I know we had a. I know we had a speaker card from Scott Honeychurch.
Yeah, I thought you'd be able to speak earlier. I'm good.
Okay. If you want to, you're happy to speak again if you want to say anything about the flag raising. You don't have to, sir. Just, you're welcome to.
Thank you again. And as I said before, I want to express my whole heart and support for raising the flag. I think it's a unifying factor. As I said earlier, you know, I've seen discussions on Nextdoor and things like that about it. It's controversial. It is absolutely not controversial. It's values that we all embrace as a community, being open, welcome, forward thinking. So thank you for?
Thank you, sir, for your comment. Would anyone else like to speak on this item? Seeing no other speaker cards, I will, well, before closing public comment, I will note that we have four, people who submitted written public comment on this item, which we've all received and is in the packet. And I will close public comment then and bring this matter back to the council for discussion and direction. So does anyone want to comment? Or is I can?
Well, I'm certainly happy to agree that I'd love to see the flag raised and I'm happy to see this be an annual event here in Orinda. And I, again, as we talked about earlier, I appreciate all the sentiment that was expressed in the community. And I think it is an excellent thing for us to do, especially at, you know, maybe this time in history. So I think it's very important to continue to show what kind of a community Orinda is.
And I'll say, I've had concerns about flags. The American flag and the State of California flag are, you know, certainties, other flags are optional. But in looking into my heart and our community and trying to think about what's best for our community, I feel like it's important that we raise this flag. And I don't think people have raised the whole slippery slope, is this going to lead to other flags that are perhaps more controversial or more difficult for our community? And my feeling is we'll have to take those situations if and when they arise. But at this time, I am in favor of raising the pride flag. And if it helps one person in our community feel more welcome and that this is their community and everyone's community, then fly it with pride. Thank you.
Thank you. I fully agree with both of you. And I think that as a, as a policy matter, I think it makes sense to raise the pride flag and adopt a policy that we're going to do that and that it, because it adds so much value to our community and really benefits folks by making people feel welcome. And for all the reasons expressed, I think very adeptly in a lot of the public comment we received tonight on the proclamation and on this item. And I also think that we should just adopt, I favor adopting approving, approval of raising it annually during the month of June and adopting that now. And, you know, I don't think it needs to come back to us every year. Agreed. I'll move that. Okay, so we, the, and in terms of direction, I think it's, it would be lovely, like, you know, I know we're, we're close to June, but I think it would be lovely in terms of direction personally, I think it'd be lovely to have, you know, within limited resources, a nice celebration because it's, a lot of, the level of engagement we got tonight was really heartwarming.
We'd be happy to help facilitate or extend an invitation to the community for a flag raising ceremony if there's, if people are around on June 1st. Is that when you would like to do it?
I think we were looking at June, June.
We tend to be.
We could do it second or third at 11:00 AM, but yeah, I think that's what we were looking at.
Well, we'll raise it on the first, we'll take it down and then we'll re-raise it again. We'll figure it.
Okay, we'll figure it out. Okay, so we are, we have a motion to approve raising the rainbow pride flag annually during the month of June.
And I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes unanimously. And that takes us to Item H2, which is our process to fill the vacancies on the Planning Commission and the Arts and Public Places Committee due to the departure of the wonderful people we recognized tonight. And so do we have a staff?
I'll have Sherry give that report.
Okay.
So we currently have two unscheduled vacancies, one in the Planning Commission and one in the Arts and Public Places Committee. In February, the city council conducted their annual interviews and there were two interested citizens who were not appointed at the time because there were not enough seats available on the committees and commissions. It just so happens that there's one Planning Commission interest and there's one on the Art and Public Places Committee. In accordance with state law, I also posted a notice of vacancy, giving people, other people in the community time to consider whether they're interested in serving. So tonight, my agenda is to just talk about the process or options available to fill the vacancies amongst the interested applicants. And so the three that we've listed here are to have the mayor interview all the interested applicants and recommend that to the full council to appoint. You could establish an ad hoc subcommittee of two council members to interview and make recommendations to the full council at a future meeting or set a date for the full council to interview all the interested applicants. And so with that, I'll take any questions.
Okay, yes, House Member G.
Yes. Do we know, have you been able to reach out to the people that we were not able to appoint to see if they're still interested?
That's something I would do after tonight. I wanted to see what the council's desire was first.
Other questions?
Have you received interest from other people since posting your notes?
We have not.
If we wanted to though, what other sort of recruitment? We've posted the notices, but we haven't really recruited. Can you speak a little to that?
Right, so we did it, the notices per state law, just, but I could do an active recruitment with putting it out in the outlook and reaching out to the community in a broader sense. So, and that's something I would, direction I would take from you tonight.
Any other questions? Okay, if there's no more council questions, I'll open public comment on Item H1. Is there any member, I'm sorry, H2, thank you. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak on Item H2? Seeing none, I will close public comment and bring it back to the council for discussion. And I generally try to speak last, but this time I'm going to speak first just to share some thoughts, which is in, in general, I think that, you know, having more input is helpful in making appointments. On the other hand, I don't want to ask the full council to convene for two appointments. So I really don't have a strong preference on this and really wanted, you know, feedback rather than making any sort of suggestion here. I did think that it might be helpful to do, you know, just to put it out there and do some recruitment, but really wanted to hear from my colleagues as to what you think makes sense.
I don't think it's been that long since we did the whole process and the candidates did seem quite capable. I guess my first question is to find out whether or not they're still interested. And if they were still interested, I'm perfectly amenable to appointing them, but if they're not, going back and doing larger recruitment makes perfect sense.
I would agree with that completely because as my recollection was that we actually felt quite good about the candidates we interviewed and simply didn't have enough spaces for them. So if they're still interested, I think I would be very much in favor of, you know, having the mayor appoint them. And if they're not, then happy to, you know, see us reach out to a broader recruitment again and, you know, maybe have an ad hoc committee, subcommittee.
If, if they were interested, do you want any follow-up? Do you want me to have a follow-up interview with them or just a brief check-in or is it sufficient for Sherry to ascertain that interest? We could do both, but I don't think.
Either way, we would bring it back to the next council meeting for the full council to appoint. So you could decide whether you feel like you need to interview again?
I don't think we need to interview again. I think we can just, if they're interested, I could have a quick phone call with them just to.
It's a good idea.
Check in and then if so, we could bring those appointments or either one of them if they're interested, back to the council for appointment at our next meeting if we add quickly. And then if one or both are not interested, then do we want to appoint an ad hoc so the ad hoc can move on interviewing them and we don't have to wait till our next meeting to appoint an ad hoc? Or, I mean, the only difficulty is there aren't many of us here from which to appoint. So. Wait till there's others who can. Well, I'm happy to be one of the two on the ad hoc, but I would like someone else to join me.
I'm happy to do it.
Okay, I mean, we could just, you know, appoint one of our council members who aren't here.
Yes. That's the price of not being here, but.
But if, if you're willing to join me, Councilmember Hoxsey.
I'd be happy to.
Then I think, I think that Vice Mayor and Councilmember Riley will not object. So is that a process that we can agree on?
We have Plan A and we have Plan B.
Yeah. Okay. But just so we can get it back quickly and get the vacancies filled. Okay, wonderful. Thank you. Okay, and that concludes Item H2 of our meeting. And that takes us to council member reports. Do we have any council member reports?
I do not have anything to report this meeting.
Okay.
No, I don't think I have anything either.
Okay. I, I wanted, I just have a couple of, I wanted to thank staff for the wildfire prevention fair, the third annual I attended and it was, it was, I think, I particularly heard from a couple of folks following that they thought it was a big success. And so that was great. And I also got to do what I know that I think you've described as one of the fun things about, funnest things about being mayor. And I know that former mayor Worth described it as that, which was give out proclamations to three amazing Eagle Scouts on Sunday. And one of them was in the class of sort of the first crop of women Eagle Scouts. And so that was especially meaningful. And I'm trying to think what else we have been working on. We have on May 30th coming up, a working group meeting in Orinda with Senator Grayson that myself and the vice mayor will be attending together with our city manager and some other agencies. And that's looking for a productive session there, so we'll definitely keep you updated. And I am sure there's more, but I will turn it over to our city manager.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and council members. There's not much to report. We did have the fair over the weekend and we did get a lot of interest in the fire wise booth in particular, but I want to thank all the agencies and groups that came out to support us this weekend. And so a well-received event again. Last week, we had a sales tax oversight committee meeting, commission meeting. And so staff presented to them at that meeting and, you know, we're going to continue to work with them on some suggestions they might have for future incentives and/or ways to appropriate measure our funds. They, they're very interested in finding more ways to push more measure our dollars to wildfire prevention and preparedness. And this week, tomorrow evening, we have a school two-by-two meeting and that will be held over at the district office. And so we will be talking about an update on the crossing guard program and other services we could prepare for in the event of an emergency with buses with the schools. So we'll be talking about those topics.
Well, with that, that brings us to Item K, Matters Initiated. Are there any matters initiated tonight? No? Okay, I don't have any either. That moves us to Item L, which is closed session. Our closed session tonight is a designation of agency labor negotiators. Sorry, one second.
So if you would like, Mayor, I could just kind of identify that for this upcoming closed session and either in advance or you don't have to make any decisions tonight. But typically, in review of labor negotiations with the city attorney, you would designate two representatives of the city council to work with the city attorney on labor negotiation matters. So you could do that at this point in time if you'd like to put together the ad hoc for the labor negotiators.
Okay.
You don't have to do that tonight, but it's an option for you to do.
And can we discuss that now or should I take public comment on closed session matters first?
I think you take it after, the way the agenda is drafted, it has the public comment on the closed session after you would take the session.
So do we want to, do we want to designate an ad hoc committee now?
I guess the only comment I would have is I don't know if the vice mayor or council member Riley would have any strong interest, so I don't want to take away the opportunity from them.
Okay, so since we are missing two council members, we may want to wait till our next meeting to do that.
We could, we could certainly wait to the next meeting. We could put it on your agenda or put it on the agenda in this format, depending on what else is on closed session for the next ma, for the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, I think that we have consensus that we'd like to defer it to the next meeting. And so now, so that the, the closed session matters for identification are two. One is Item L, A is City Attorney Performance Evaluation pursuant to Government Code Section 54957. We need to conduct the performance evaluation of City Attorney Ossie Wolf. And then Item B is our conference with labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section We have a conference with the city's designated labor negotiators and the city attorney. So since we are putting off the designation, do we meet or not?
You would be meeting on Item A.
So do we have any public comments on the closed session matters that have been identified? Seeing no members of the public, I will close public comment and we will go into closed session.